19 East Main Street, this is Liberty City Council Regular Session. So, thank you, Council, for being here. It's good to see everybody tonight. Thank you to our public for being here. At this time, I'm going to ask Councilmember Powell, please, if you will give our invocation for us, please.
Pray. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for the opportunity we have, Lord, to serve you, to serve our city. And we just pray, God, that all that we do tonight would be done decently and in order. And, God, we pray we'd honor you with our lives and pray that you would lead each of us, Lord, as we make decisions for this town. Yes, these things in Christ's name, amen.
Amen, thank you. If you'll please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. Thank you. All right, so we are going to get started with our appointments tonight. This is something that we're excited about. We have Bailey Locke, who we are going to be appointing and swearing in as our City Clerk. And then after Bailey, we will have Kristi Horton. We will be voting on that to have her appointed as our Treasurer. So, we'll first get started with Bailey Locke as our City Clerk. And I'm going to ask our Council... If I have a motion to appoint Bailey Locke as our City Clerk?
I'll make a motion.
All right, so I... All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Grabiel. I have a second by Councilmember Paget. Do I have any discussion? All right, and I'd just like to say that Bailey has been with us since September. And she came in very eager and excited about working as our HR Director. And then we talked with her about also including City Clerk. So she has been working really hard and have just... I was talking with our Administrator, Michael Calvert, and told him how she has just taken ownership of her position there. And so it is such an encouragement to see somebody come in and just go full-on with their job. So she's done a lot already since September to help with the HR and get us in compliance where we need to be there. She's learning everything she can learn, as fast as she can learn about City Clerk. And she's doing a great job with that, with helping with our agendas, getting ordinances together and resolutions. She's just jumped in and done a great job for us. I'm really pleased, I'm really encouraged. So, at this time, then, if nobody has any other discussion, then I'm going to ask for the vote. All those in favor to appoint Bailey Locke as our City Clerk, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All right, and the vote is unanimous. So, congratulations. And I will ask, we've got Pat Wellburn here from the County of Pickens to come and swear her in. And if you want, you can have one of your family members hold the Bible for you. If your husband, is he... Is he there? Yeah, if you want him to do that. Okay, that's fine. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and y'all can come right over here, you can come back right here. All right, so we'll let her get that signed. Thank you, Bailey, thank you, Mr. Wellburn, we appreciate you being here. Okay, thank you so much, until next time. All right, so we're going to move on to our Treasurer, Kristi Horton. And as Treasurer, she does not have the requirement to be sworn in, but she does need to be appointed by Council. And so, at this time, I want to ask, do we have a motion to appoint Kristi Horton as our Treasurer?
I'll make the motion to appoint her.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Powell. Do I have a second? I have a second by Councilmember Massey. And do I have any discussion? All right, so I will go ahead and say that Kristi joined us in September as well, a week before Bailey joined us in City Hall. And she has been doing an excellent job in our Finance Department. I'm just very pleased and encouraged as well with Kristi. She came in and, just like Bailey, has jumped in and has tackled a very challenging job and situation. And right now, on top of everything, she... We've got the audit going on, so you can just imagine. I walked into her office this morning, and she was on the floor digging through some files. She's being asked via auditors for lots of information, and she is handling it very, very well. So, I'm very proud of Kristi. Thank you, Kristi, for everything that you're doing for us here in Liberty. We appreciate you. And we're going to go ahead, if there's not any other discussion or questions at this time, I'll ask for the vote. All those in favor of appointing Kristi Horton as our Treasurer, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All right, so it's unanimous. Thank you, and congratulations. Thank you. So, I'm just very excited about our staff at City Hall. Michael and I have worked together, and I really believe we have put together a really great staff. We have got a great foundation in City Hall. And we'll be hearing from another new City Hall staff here in a little bit when we go through our reports. But the Lord has really blessed us and has brought to us some great people who know their stuff and shoot for excellence in all that they do there in City Hall in their jobs. So, grateful for them. All right, so at this time, we have a presentation. Okay, there she is. Okay, we have a presentation from E.K. Hoffman with ABLE Access. And so, if you want to come to the microphone, is it on? Okay, yes, and we'll get the camera over there so we can see you as well. But E.K. Hoffman is going to give us a brief talk on ABLE Access and what the organization does. And they are actually going to be helping us with our ADA compliance. Is it dead? Okay, all right, well. We're ready.
My name is E.K. Hoffman, I am the Director of ABLE Access at ABLE South Carolina. And I'm here to show our support for the city of Liberty and y'all's efforts to be more inclusive of people with disabilities. And so, a little bit about how what ABLE South Carolina does and then about ABLE Access. Is, so, ABLE South Carolina is a center that seeks to equip people with disabilities with the skills to foster independent living lives. We also advocate for people with disabilities on the local, city, state, national, and actually international level as well. Our CEO and President recently actually led our media, the Strangefeld. We also seek to educate about the disability community and about the rights of people with disabilities. And some of what ABLE Access does, what I oversee is that it's a program of ABLE South Carolina that does essentially like, it's like a consulting arm that will do architectural assessments. So we can come and do an assessment of any of the buildings that there are that would need to be ADA compliant and that we would write up and help report some recommendations, help write a transition plan, and make sure everything is not only compliant, which is at the baseline, but they're actually friendly to people with disabilities. And we also do web digital accessibility assessments. And so we can make sure that any sort of media or websites are up to code because the ADA actually does cover digital communication as well. And we can also do any policy and procedure review to make sure that not only the city of Liberty itself, but any other associated contract or organization are being inclusive of people with disabilities. And so, first of all, I want to thank y'all for having me here. After everything that Phil Schill will do out there, thank you so much for having me here. And although it is an obligation of the ADA, it's very rare that cities, organizations, businesses even will actually like reach out wanting to have us, and I really want to be thankful for that, for reaching out. And so, there are a couple of titles that would apply that y'all wouldn't be aware of. And so, the ADA has a couple of different titles. The ones that would apply primarily here would be Title 1, which is employment, which does cover state and local government, as well as any employer that has more than 15 employees would need to have inclusive hiring practices that don't discriminate against people with disabilities. And discrimination isn't always like, you look like you have a disability, therefore, like, we're not going to hire you. Sometimes it's a little bit more complicated. But something that ABLE South Carolina and people accessing you is, give technical assistance. So if there's ever any questions about employment, about whether or how to make accommodations for an employee with disabilities, we can definitely like talk through those solutions and, you know, let you know if something applies if they're going to do hardship, or if it's an accommodation that can be made. Because most accommodations when it comes to employment can actually be made for free. And it's oftentimes just some like creative thinking that might sound familiar to you a lot. And so we are happy to do that. Something else that we can do would be under Title 2, which is going to be for government entities. And Title 2 is going to cover like the accessibility of municipal buildings, of any parent that somebody would need to do like renew licenses or go to school, all of those things. And so, what we can do is assess like architectural spaces, everything from like the parking lot to the bathrooms to the hallway break rooms, how we can use the whole space. And put together, as we told before, on how to be more accessible. And this, and I don't say all this as like saying like compliance and like the ADA and all of that to like be scary and to say that y'all are out of compliance, it's really to offer praise in the fact that y'all are being very proactive. And I really appreciate that. And it's something we don't see very often, is like being proactive with accessibility and with the inclusion of people with disabilities is so important. And so, something that we can do is just provide that technical assistance, provide that support. And if there's to form any sort of accessibility or ADA committee, we'd be happy to like sit in on those meetings to make sure that everybody's on the right track. And not only to like be compliant, but to maybe be inclusive to people of all different kinds of disabilities.
Okay, that sounds great, thank you so much. Do we have any questions from the Council? Okay, well, thank you so much for your time and for being here. Yes, yes, that would be great, that'll be great. Thank you so much, we appreciate the information, we appreciate your time, and we will be in touch. Yes, thank you. All right, and at this time, this is our Public Session for our speakers. Do we have any... Anybody signed up? Okay, we have no one that has signed up. So then we'll move along to our Approval of Minutes for our December 12, 2022 minutes. They're in your packet. So, do I have a motion to approve our December 12, 2022 minutes as presented here?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Grabiel. Do I have a second? Okay, I have a second by Councilmember Shuen Leyden. Do I have any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving our minutes for December 12, 2022, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All right, and that's unanimous. All right, thank you. And we have no unfinished business, and we will move on to new business, which we've got some first readings of resolutions here. We discussed these at our work session last week. So the first one is 2023-01, it's the Work Safety Resolution. And this resolution, it must be revised with every new election. This resolution goes over how important work safety is to the city of Liberty. So, do I have a motion to approve this first reading of this resolution? Or this resolution, not first reading, but for this resolution? It's going to get one reading. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I have a motion. Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Grabiel, a second by Councilmember Paget. Do I have any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving Resolution 2023-01, Work Safety Resolution, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous. All right, our second resolution is 2023-02, The Americans with Disability Act's ADA Committee Resolution. In this resolution, it creates a committee for the Americans with Disabilities Act. This committee will meet periodically to provide guidance to the city of Liberty regarding making its facilities and programs accessible to those with disabilities. So, do I have a motion to approve this resolution? Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Shuen Leyden. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second by Councilmember Whitaker. Do I have any discussion?
We had initially said that the city administrator was going to kind of be the person overseeing this, right? Because they're not actually listed as a member of the committee in the resolution as it stands. It has the Director of Community Development, Director of Public Works, Parks and Rigs, Chief of Police, and...
Michael.
Second was being, I'm not highly...
There you go.
Secondly, I'm not a member of the committee. Then I'm a coordinator, so I would still be there with the committee. See if I'm not too much of a... As the coordinator, I'd be able to see if...
That makes sense.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, and I just wanted to say, this is, you know, all part of continuing what the previous administration had started with our ADA, to be compliant and doing what we can to be accessible as much as possible where we can and putting those priorities where we can. So this, when we came in last December of... What year are we? Of 21, December of 21, that was one of our priorities as far as we knew here in Rosewood Center that this chairlift had not been working for who knows how long. And so that was one of the priorities when we came in to get that chairlift working. So, we did that right off the bat, and we're continuing to do what we can where we can, learning as much as we can. And that's why we brought in this representative from ABLE to see, you know, what can we do? What more can we do? And so, thank you to our Council for this being a priority for you and to Michael, our Administrator, to keep this moving forward. So, with that said, I will ask for the vote. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2023-02, The Americans with Disability Act Committee Resolution, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous. And we will go on to Resolution 2023-03, the Civility Resolution. And this, actually, in 2021, this is a pledge with the MAS C to practice and promote civility within the governing body. So, the Municipal Association of South Carolina recognized a need because, as destructive as incivility can be in everyday life, it's particularly harmful in a city council meeting or in our municipal offices. And local government is about solving practical problems, and anything that interferes with effective, respectful communication renders nearly impossible with vital jobs our members to do. So, I know some of us were at that conference when they discussed this, and I felt like it was something that we should move forward with to make this pledge as a city, as a Council. So just to let you know that some of the pillars of this civility be as eager to listen as to speak, concentrate on what you have in common, not what separates you, act as you would expect someone to act in your home, make your case on merits, not on what people want to hear, your time is valuable, so is everyone else's, respect it, ask questions to learn, answer questions with respect, concentrate on facts, not theories, ask what will persuade people in this room, not what will make a great tweet. Make your point about the issue, not the person. So, it's just an encouragement and a challenge for us as a Council to remain civil within our Council chambers, within City Hall in regard to our constituents. And we hope to get that in return. I know sometimes it's hard to be civil when, you know, things get heated between us, maybe, when things are being said out in the public that are slanderous, libel, disrespectful. You know, it can be hard for us to stay civil. You want to lash out because you know things are not true, or they're unjust, and it's unfair. But we've got to do our best to stay civil so we can keep moving on ahead and doing what we need to do for Liberty to make this place a good place, a wonderful place for people to live and to thrive. So, I am going to read the pledge. It's right here. So the pledge says, "The city of Liberty pledges to practice and promote civility within the governing body. The elected officials of the Council enact this civility pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of the city of Liberty. This pledge ensures all communication, both spoken and written, to be open, honest, and transparent as this is vital for cultivating trust and relationships. This pledge ensures mutual respect to achieve municipal goals, recognizing that patience, tolerance, and civility are imperative to success. This pledge ensures opportunities for finding common ground and engaging in civil discussion to seek solutions while actively listening and thoughtfully participating." So, I'm going to ask for a motion to accept this Resolution, the Civility Resolution 2023-03. Do I have a motion? Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Massey. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Whitaker. Do I have any discussion? All right, all those in favor of the Civility Resolution, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
And it's unanimous. So thank you, Council, on this pledge. We appreciate, I appreciate your thought to this and your acceptance of this. And I think it's going to be good moving forward. And I do have a button for everybody, by the way. Our civility button. Civility respects solutions, it says. All right, we're going to move on to Resolution 2023-04, Safety Coordinator Resolution. This resolution, it's responsible, the Coordinator is responsible to oversee and monitoring the safety and loss control efforts of the city of Liberty. You'll see that in your packet as well. That's one that we discussed as well during our work session. So, just working on making sure that we are putting practices into place to keep everybody safe everywhere that we work in Liberty. So, can I, do I have a motion to accept this Resolution, Safety Coordinator Resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Grabiel. Do I have a second? I have a second by Councilmember Shuen Leyden. Do I have any discussion?
Can you give me a little more about what you're talking about here?
About the Safety Coordinator Resolution? It's to put a coordinator into place that will oversee, to make sure that we are doing all that we can within the city to make sure that we have safety guidelines put into place. And then that coordinator will meet periodically with each member of each department head to make sure that we are doing, we are good, that we're safe. Yeah, it all, yeah, it has to do with OSHA requirements.
Will there be someone assigned to each department?
There'll be, there'll be a coordinator assigned to oversee. So, but each department head would be who they would meet with. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
A certified? I don't know about certified, but... Yes.
How do you get certified?
Well, they'll be appointed. They'll be appointed by, not necessarily certified wouldn't be the correct word, it would be appointed by Council.
But there are certain OSHA-related certifications that they probably do need to look into if they're going to be looking at OSHA-related...
Well, OSHA will be, yeah, in touch with Bailey.
I think that's what Jeff was talking about.
Okay. Okay.
We don't want to have a position, just have a position, just to be a field position.
Oh, no, no, no.
Just to say we've got it.
Okay.
Just a comment.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor of this resolution to have a safety coordinator, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay. Moving on. We do have, this is the first reading of our twenty twenty-three dash zero-one. This is a hundred percent annexation free holders petition for one seventy-five Airport Road property. And this property will be zone five-ten, which is limited industrial. And at this time, there's no known plans on that property, but this, this property owner wants to annex into the city. So do I have a motion for this first reading of twenty twenty-three dash zero-one? Make a motion. Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Whitaker. Do I have a second? Okay, you want to do a second? I have a second by Councilmember Shuen Laban. Do I have any discussion on that? Grayson wants to say something. All right, well, hearing none, all those in favor of this first reading of twenty twenty-three dash zero-one, one hundred percent annexation free holders petition for one seventy-five Airport Road property, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
We don't know of anything that he's doing. Yeah, there's, yeah. All right, well, that concludes that part of our agenda. So we're going to move on to our department head reports. First up, we've got Chief Gilstrap.
December, I mean, you see all the numbers there, six arrested, DUIs, thousand. Hope everybody had a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. We graduated two new officers in December, two new officers this past Friday. We're getting them in the training, field training of our officers. The work for citizens. But each one of them wanted to say something about how they met the face. What I have, I just want to introduce some, this is Don Ray. Pretend all. And then next, we don't want to. Pretend I have them, just want to put the face of the name. See them out about. All the.
Okay, there you go. Yes. Okay, yes, well, thank you and congratulations. We're proud to have you with us and we thank you for being with us and choosing Liberty to come work. And and as far as Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, we appreciate you, each one of you. Thank you so much. All right, next for our reports is our Public Works Department, and you've got that in front of you. Just really quickly, the trash pickup was thirty-two tons, cardboard pickup was six tons, brush pickup was twenty-two loads, brown goods was six tons, and there was, let me see, when it gets down here, it's hard to see what that is. Okay, fifty low case. So, and thank you to our Public Works for everything that they did during this freezing, all this cold. I know there were some water issues. There were some water line breaks, and we're just grateful that they get out in the cold and they do what they can to help us where they can. It's not an easy job, but we're grateful to have the men that we do in our Public Works Department, so.
Mayor, while we're on the, I was just going to ask, Michael, have we had any reports then? When we first brought on the trash service, we were supposed to get updates on any concerns or complaints or anything that they get on a monthly basis. Have we received anything up to this point on that?
We haven't received anything.
Yeah, I know we just talked about that when we signed the contract, that we would get kind of a semi-regular report as to how things were going, so we need. Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay. All right, and then moving on to our Recreation Department report. Basketball games have started, and we host games every Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday night from six to nine P M. And the Mills Avenue Gym Floor was just recently installed, and we're currently running basketball practices there four and five times a week. So if you wanted to get a chance to go in and take a gander and see our new gym floor, you can call over to the Rec Department or check out their Facebook page, and you can probably see their schedule when they'll be there. You can go cheer on the kids there at the same time, take a peek at the new floor that looks amazing. So, and we appreciate Austin and his staff and all that they do to upkeep all of our parks and recreation buildings and keeping them looking spiffed up, so. Next is our building official. So I'm going to turn that one over to Philip Trotter, who is our Community Development Director. We're grateful to have you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to take a step back. To the face of the head, to myself and you guys. My name is Philip Trotter. Michael, the mayor, thank you for the opportunity to join your staff on a part-time basis to any way possible, I work with everybody, we wear many hats and not have many responsibilities, but we'll be focusing on your community development aspect of things. We are kind of in the transition phase right now from our predecessors. They will be working through any permits that they issue. Currently, we're not going to take over their expectations. That will be followed throughout, so they are completed. We did permit about three projects, our small permits in December. After we brought that in house, we had an electrical permit, we had a structural permit on a cell phone tower, as well as a grid. I am going to be meeting this week with your police chief to start talking through some code enforcement policies and for we're working on updating some forms, some applications, and some other housekeeping items as we break this whole apartment down. Any questions that I can help you with at this time or answer any questions?
Okay, well, thank you, Philip. We are grateful to have Philip and all his expertise coming from, he was at the county doing with their planning for a while. He was at the City of Pickens as their administrator, and so we are grateful to add him to the staff here at City of Liberty. So, good things happening. Okay, next we have our City Administrator Report.
The purpose of this report mainly to discuss some of the major things that we're able to accomplish. Able to achieve. With a, I'll read the report. Following that, I'm trying to put the straight, a few of the projects and see whether we want to process in twenty twenty-three. While we're able to do many items, I'm included here after discussing a few of the top one. Of course, a strategic plan is, I think. That's something that was a first of its kind for the city. Since it was a total, again, with that, we'll create a massive plan. Other items, they kind of put that together and jumbled it and had the, you know, the council give us a vision of what we're going to do. To create a strategic plan. It's something that I use as a, that I do every day. And it also was public about they come and say, where do you guys work? So it's been a great, great foundation for me. The council as well as the citizens. Another thing we did this year at the beginning, basically, sort of at the end of twenty twenty-two. Two young developers, can't use. Developing a big property up there. Now we know there's a canyon ridge, and we spoke about that just last year. We've been developing a site for approximately two hundred homes, so two hundred homes for the new, new citizens. The work that, and it is actually possibly a phase two. Two hundred homes for citizens. Where it is, it doesn't really affect anyone's view or show any kind of color, because it is off the road. Just don't see it. Other than the entry, where you want to see one whole, otherwise it's a strip road. But it also, I just said, brings more citizens to. Okay, yeah, while we're in the holding pattern currently, just this week, actually yesterday, we, as you know, we had water meters that are waiting to be installed because of the current situation with supply chain. The ratings that the water meter work, even seeing that this. Yesterday, we did receive some, I have to call them, I first called them, but it's a good, good start, and I had a meeting with first, and just trying to figure out how many were going to be out before this Friday, as well as if we have a certain amount on top with the director of Public Works, and he thinks that we'd like to kind of understand how those works, but with water meters, they have books, and they're sort of reading, you know, where the water meters are. Maybe we might get them installed if we have enough by book, by region, so we don't have all of them at one time. But I do have to speak with Ferguson because they're the ones that have the, the people installing them, and I need to make sure something they're able to do. But they have to do it all at one time, or there is nothing like that. But the exciting thing is, is that we did get some ratings from this, so that's a pretty exciting thing. But that started this year, and it will be a huge benefit to the city, getting accurate water readings right now. We, I think we twenty to twenty-five percent from the readings. This will make them definitely accurate, as well as, the situation will only be much quicker to do the regions right now. It'll take up to a week to do the means. Once we get these in place, it'll take me half a day to do this, and basically, get to warranty spots in the city. And get to the readings almost seamlessly. So not only will it be more accurate, it will also be much less intrusive, how it lies. And I know it's one of the love of the locals, and three water holes. In the twenty twenty-two, really twenty twenty-two, it became part of the Pickens Regional Water System. For those who aren't familiar, that is a organization that was put together for some communities as well as water coordinates in Pickens County. Instead of getting our water from outside sources, we are going to be tapping in the Kiwi and City Liberty Pickens, as well as some water groups. We're getting our water directly from that, and or in that. Say, what happens with that right now? I've been one month on the fact that it's basically tomorrow, it's always the day after this meeting, so I can't give you the information that we want because our means of the if the town will be taking a little project. But since we're right now, we've been able to get always a point of build with our strategic plans. That's a very exciting project, and we've been in the city for decades. Let me see what else. Oh, we have, as I think you can see, are starting to get several businesses that are and one could be ready, and also of twenty twenty-two was B C R Plastics. That's a pretty exciting project, but one they took a dilapidated building, a blue gang, where there's a building that's not really built there. They bought that facility, they're working on it, and they're now looking to go further right now. For the last year, they've been cleaning it, they've been getting ready, but now they're starting to actually put equipment in. Hopefully begin work soon, and they will invite us there once that happens, to show us, I mean, that's, that's going on there. So it's a pretty exciting thing. Spoken with them about the tissue party about looking at the tech school, the high school tech school, to see if there's actually jobs for our kids there, that they can possibly train in there. There's some exciting things with a business like this. See, yeah, our dedication to our A G water sewer line is ongoing. The good thing is, we're able to replace two of those, not you, who are able to use our construction, they say water line there, which one, I think was a good example, what we are able to do with future water lines. But we're also able to do make up that sewer line there. That one, it was also not what we expected because of the rock. So that one's still a long road project. We're able to do about half of that. We need to talk to the state about getting some water lines to, we know that. But it was, those two were excellent projects in twenty twenty-two, to show what we're able to do with our water and sewer lines, and it's a great example. We were able to update our recent man's society. Now, that might not be that, you know, normal. But the way we did this this year makes it so that they are able to scope to, you know, the paper, and what they need properlyized. But we're going to be bringing back to full the several, what's like twenty acres, I think, that they're really not using. That's something we might need to use. That's an exciting situation we did. And also, of course, having activities for citizens, a visitor is a priority of this council, and we've been able to make some excellent first steps towards that goal of the Mills Gym. It's now being used for with a new floor that, as the mayor mentioned, that's a stall, just a little. They got that, it's out with state ones, the our other thing was to do that, and get that for us. Sorry, the park is being updated right now, has to move on the stage. We're looking to have new rail and chair coming. So it should be, I mean, this sprint that you will definitely be able to use, as well as some new future projects with that area, which is a potential need. So it's still an unknown project, and it's definitely not the key. And Rosewood as well, this is a element. So those are generally the three areas that we're looking at at least right now for not only our citizens, but for those visitors to come and see what Liberty is doing, what we're trying to do in the future. And the roof here has been replaced, and we also looked at this next potential project for the future, is short of C L E. So those are the new projects, but again, that is like the third like school. That's some exciting stuff that we did in twenty twenty-two. I might say that the, uh, currency staff and the governor mayor, all that, uh, is basically a product of very hard work all through the twenty Got actually these things, and I'm really proud of that. Pretty exciting to have this scene in place, and that it's where we're gonna tackle the projects that we had in twenty twenty-three. Have grants that, uh, that, uh, that's a great, uh, but not for work, but, uh, we created grants that, uh, basically, uh, bring in two way, uh, to our city, which is an exciting thing. Now, the park again is a form of, uh, building, but we received that didn't see the other half in twenty twenty-two. Those are different projects. Also, uh, realizing also most or those two that you Uh, the day grant, uh, the environment protection. That is exciting about that, and really makes me proud of my team, whereas that full five hundred thousand dollars coming out of the city. What's also exciting about that is, um, it had been attempted, uh, two times, but we're mixing the temperature that I'm pursuing. Very nerve wracking that we will see Pretty exciting about that, that's supposed to go out there. Uh, two projects are definitely here. And, and also, uh, the B C R Plastics location. So we'll do some major assessments there, uh, as well as the locations. What's exciting about that is, when you have this grant, you do these assessments, it makes it so much easier. Pretty exciting about that. There's more I can, uh, read about that, I mean, we have a state on us to help us with. That we see So we'll be working on a last space project, and others, yeah, we're generous. Only make for outdoor recreation. When I'm stopping out with the bill, Eric, that we're looking to not just inside. Right now, to this area, like this, although we will be pumped a That's the goal, more efficient. So that's what the other step is, and pulling it together, putting it together. Pretty exciting, because that's not a problem we have. One last thing, we'll mention that, isn't one here, uh, of the It's also the time this council, this, uh, two of those professionals, both my staff, in approximately twenty-six ordinances. Just notice that is a huge number of licenses they've got. Will be approved basically of These has, and even the dedication to have these orders. Looked at research by my team, and also looked at research by themselves. As an official here, my staff, so I'm hoping we don't have twenty-six words this year, but it, it's the case. So we're excited to know next year. Very, very short, but the budget is, uh, December, December, of course, not much different than than November, where I gave, not much has changed. We are on pace to Close because we have raising evidence, but we have pretty much everything exists there. Uh, it's gonna be a tight one, so I feel very proud of that. But there are any questions you want to ask in this board of directors? As I mentioned before, uh, things, you know, that are first to do with the public works, uh, you know, things. While we've got any questions on that, because it does show that we have a six person hour, hour, which is a It doesn't, the public works is That is not So I have to take that out and take that out. We are about there. If you can see something like that, I don't want to hang here. But, uh, but I, I agree, and Here is, I do hear the mayor, we have a great We've had an exciting twenty twenty. We've got a great team that are helping achieve what you need. And that's all I have against that question. So as far as the water purposes, we've tried to solve it.
Um, with, with the budget, we have been in discussion of getting some new software and doing some things to be able to separate this out. Have we made any progress at all with?
Absolutely, sir. We actually contracted, uh, with a company that will start, uh, the public wants to start with a new one. So they, they start at the same time, but, yeah, we, uh, I think, I left that a That software system at all. Excellent job, they, uh, looked at several different companies, any presentations for a long time. And they decided on a company called uh, which we use. Uh, they've been, uh, apparently hopefully improved, uh, but, uh, it, uh, speaking for them, so I apologize, uh, to them for this, but, uh, when they spoke to me about, the only thing that I thought was important one of us is efficient purchase, that doesn't mean it's cheaper, it means that my staffs and restaurant, uh, things like, uh, the assistance for hours. When, when you do things like that, cost doesn't matter as well, but it, it efficiently, it needs to be Which is why I just can be able to confuse it, we have one bank account, how that affects all trackers, this convinced, whereas uh, generally what you do is, for most of these funds, like general fund, they have separate accounts. And that's what this, I, I required that this software had to be, to handle title, because not, it can't. So we came up with Harris, and they will be, uh, turning it forward in July, but it should be a place.
Are they providing a complaint resolution coordinator?
That is a safety coordinator, I think this is first of all, if it is.
When we get all these new radio reads. I'm gonna have a few.
Yeah, I'm sure we will, and like I said, that hole looks like the
Do we have any communication going on? I know we get talked about. I believe Ferguson was gonna have some stuff to put out, so people understand what this increase is, like, why is it happening?
Absolutely, and we'll be a refresher, that's one of the things this body is about, is, okay, we might be ready to go. Let's make sure that we're what we, like, put in last July. There is someone to do that, so. There'll be mailers as well, as they were beginning, like they team, I remember what they were talking about, maybe they go house up to the door, and they're available, as they're doing so that people know that they've been there, that they've done something, and once again, we'll be social media as well. Either in, in Tillingdale or, uh, September. Uh, we actually back to software. Yeah, so, yeah, now this one works is, uh, essentially a laptop, and what'll happen is, generally, I think it'll be two different locations, you can just park the truck there and pop on the laptop, and it will all just go right into there, and that's the region, it'll happen, the entire region. Not really bad, and I think they're closing the voice. Well, that's probably all we, but at the beginning, it, it, pretty much they were saying to us, they could have any type of city rather than, I don't know, less than half a day, because it would just instantly run. And as they're changing, it will also be, things will still be coming in even so that they'll be able Much quicker. So now when you start, like, sorry. Gage is on the layers? Uh, it's not a leak detector, uh, gauge, what it is, it will, it has a water use system, so if it notices that more water is being used during a certain period, it will, it, it can notify, like, the water, that something doesn't seem right here. Now, let's see, the size of water, the water quality, they know about the homeowner, to let them know that they're using. If something like that comes up, that
There are sorts of water.
Absolutely, if something like that comes up, that's, uh, another class, that's not consistent, not normal. Uh, the water actually, it's a, it's a, we've got this, uh, notice on the water, you know, she needs a visit recommendation to try and make sure, like, you know, I think she doesn't, she tells me where they're just You know, but, but she's already doing that now, this will make it much that much water. She's like, I'm happy, reliable, we'll be walking down, popping This will be assured from home on. Yes, and, and, and now she does that, but of course, by the time you notice the intent for this is, it'll be noticed when it's a lot less. And so it's actually, like, under for the city, because a lot of times if something like that happens, we let, we reimburse them, we have to give them a waiver. So it actually helps us as well as, we pick up and hold it up, that, you know, where it was our
All right, any other questions for Michael? All right, thank you, appreciate it, that was a, that was a long one, but a good one. No, but that was good, it's, it's a refresher of everything that was accomplished last year, and so I hope that, um, is in as encouraging and exciting for, for me as it is for you. All that was accomplished, all that we've done to help move, move the city forward and make some really good things happen. So with this new year, um, I'm just, I'm hopeful that we can continue to move the way we have and just continue to accomplish more and more. And with that, with the gym, the Mills Avenue Gym, I am just thrilled that we've got the kids back in there using that for what it was meant for, and that soon we will start to see the basketball court and the tennis courts being made new again. So we're, we're bringing things to the people, that we're, there'll be activities for people to do, and then again, like, Michael was saying, that we will work on that playground there as well, so we'll, we'll have a little gathering place there at the Mills Avenue Gym soon for, for families to go and just enjoy the outdoors and enjoy time with each other. So thank you again, Michael. All right, we're gonna move on to our city council reports. Do I have, um, a report from Councilmember Schuman Lagan?
No report.
Okay, Councilmember Graybeal?
Uh, nothing major, I did just want to clarify, and I, Michael mentioned that we had twenty-three new ordinances last year. Um, and just to clarify, some of those, because I know the public here is, oh my gosh, like, the twenty-three new ordinances in place.
Right.
Some of that is clarifying, cleaning up stuff, um, you know, making sure that we're, we're following what was already there, but making it tighter, um, that it's more functional. Yeah, and I just wanted to clarify that, because if we have people on Zoom or whatever watching, they're going, oh my gosh, they put that many new laws in. It wasn't necessarily twenty-three brand new laws, it was just cleaning up some things that needed to be cleaned up, and then adding some additional things that, that were necessary.
Yes, thank you.
So I just wanted to clarify that, because I figured we'll get emails on that, so.
That's good, thank you. All right, Councilmember Whitaker?
Uh, no report.
All right, thank you. Um, Councilmember Massey?
I have no reports.
Okay, Councilmember Powell?
I have nothing to say.
All right, and Councilmember Pageant?
Well, I don't have any plans to report, uh, I would like to talk about it.
Yes, yes, it is. All right, all right, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, well, we have come to the end of our journey here, and all that's left is to adjourn, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Powell, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second by Councilmember Graybeal, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of adjourning, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. We are adjourned, thank you.